Call our meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge. Good evening, I have the clerk please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Trustee Petrucci. From, trustee Harper is absent, trustee Germaine.
Here.
Trustee Kalani.
Here.
Treasurer Horn is absent. Rick Hopkins here, supervisor Falm.
Here.
We have Quorum of the board, we also have present township manager, James Whitman.
Thank you. Item number four is approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved.
For motion by trustee Kalani, second by trustee Petrucci, any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, motion carries. Number five is call of the public, anybody this evening that called of the public?
They're here for the road.
The road plan will be a public hearing as well, so that's our first agenda item. Anything not on that? Being nobody at call of the public, we'll move to item number six, which is approval of our consent agenda.
Move. For.
Motion by trustee Petrucci, second by trustee Germaine. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed nay, motion carries. Item number seven is a public hearing. This is a safer roads plan program that was put together through a committee, through the township. I'd like to first of all thank all those folks that were on that committee. Is anybody here, Gary was on that, anybody here from that committee? All those folks, there was probably around 20 people who spent hours going through all the different details in session on behalf of the board and our entire community. I'd like to say thank you for your efforts in that and coming up with this plan. There will be no action taken this evening on the plan, tonight's opportunity for our public to say for or against and get our comments before we go forward. The goal would be to analyze the information that's here and what's already happened. And then the board will be making a decision in the near future to put this on a ballot proposal, which would be in the November election. Manager Whitman, would you like to perhaps go through the plan in a little bit of briefness, put a little detail so people know what we're talking about, then we'll open it up for public comment?
Yeah, just a brief review and again, my thanks to the task force and definitely to the residents as well. We had, as you know, several public meetings and a number of forums online that people were able to participate in, in addition to phone surveys and paper surveys. And the participation has been excellent and we are very pleased with that. That would have been our goal from day one, is to make sure that while it's not the township's role to advocate for or against a millage, given the number of conversations that were going on in our community over the years, it seemed that a millage question was being asked for. And our goal was to make sure that if we put a millage question on the ballot again, that it reflected the best representation of the residents' interest as possible. And then we would know then that when the residents say yes or no to that, we have a clear public mandate. So again, thank you to all the residents who participated in those. We have, lucky, the task force started leaning into this issue back in the fall. Looked at a number of roads with a number of different priorities. And some of the main goals of the program were to deal with some of the existing roads that needed to be made better and to be maintained better. And we knew and could see that Livingston County Road Commission did not have the funding to fix the roads. And we knew that Lansing was debating about this issue. And really, at the end of the day, it came down to a question of we could wait for Lansing or wait for federal funds or whatever else to happen, or we can try to do something to get this done. Another one of the goals was to look at the major, some of the major east-west, north-south roads that are used by local residents. Not the M-59s and old 23s of the world, but the roads that we all use to drive around to school or parks or to church or wherever else we may be going. So a number of roads were looked at originally and for a long portion of the task force work. They also looked at pathways. And I'll talk a little bit about the, what happened there and the evolution of the discussion. Pathways were, or sidewalks were originally a consideration in the plan. There are a number of residents and there still are who believe that we need safer sidewalks and ability for safe walking and biking opportunities. At the end of the day, after, you know, public feedback, they listened. And after a difficult discussion, they reached a conclusion that if we are going to look at a millage, that the millage should just be for the roads. That the roads are clearly the higher priority and that we would pursue other ways to try to get safer sidewalks. It is still a priority, but not as high of a priority as the roads. So they, we looked at a number of different projects and the brief is that at the, the projects that are proposed are on this list as part of the recommendations. We have a number of paved roads that would get treatment to bring those up to a better condition. They used a number of criteria when looking at roads, including average daily traffic, a system called Paser Rating that looks at, it's an accepted standard for rating paved surfaces. And these were the projects that they determined needed to be rehabbed. The same went for gravel roads, they looked at a number of different projects. These are, these are lists of gravel roads that they recommending get some, about, on average, you're going to get eight inches of limestone and a good grading to them. We will look at opportunities to improve drainage along the side. None of these involve major drainage projects. If we identify any that need them, we'll try to find a way to fit them into the budget. All of these are budget numbers that we think are reasonable and achievable. And I know the hope is, is that at the end of the day, if we can achieve these for less than what's been estimated, there are a number of roads, you know, that are next on the list that we can try to address. There is one more major project in here that is paving a new road that was not previously paved, that is Hacker Road from M-59 down to Golf Club. That of course would complete the paved surface of that road from M-59 all the way down to Grand River. A number of our residents have identified that as a key alternate route and an existing gravel road in need of attention. I will tell you that the conversation at the task force is not necessarily that Hacker Road is the highest priority road that needs to get paved in our township. But given that it is a border road and Osceola Township has agreed in principle to participate in the paving of that and we could get two for one for a dollar, that made that a project very appealing and helped raise that to the top. The rest of the projects are, you know, preventative maintenance, pothole, crack sealing, just some of the good, best practices to keep our roads in the best shape possible. We would increase our chloride application on the gravel roads from three to four times a year. That not only helps with dust control throughout the township, but also helps keep those new limestone roads or existing gravel roads have a good hard compact surface throughout the year. And then some allotment for other road grading and drainage improvements as I referred to earlier. So that's the list of projects. If the, like I said, the sidewalks are no longer in the plan or a part of the millage. That being said, what is proposed is that should the millage be approved by the residents and these projects can be done, that would actually free the general fund to participate in some sidewalk projects by pursuing some grant funds, which we've talked about, the safe routes to school. And there are other grant funds that we would pursue for those and getting some of the key sidewalk projects done. There are a number of those projects, they are elsewhere in the plan. The task force is asking that those projects be done upfront with some of the other projects that would be bonded. Most of these projects are being proposed to be bonded so that they're all done in the first couple of years of the millage, rather than spread out over 10 years. And they have asked, the task force asked of those sidewalk projects that they had identified also be done in that way. So that's the brief story. We have, I put on your desk an updated count on some surveys that came in after the deadline. As you recall, we did a, put out a quick paper survey in folks' tax statement that went out at the beginning of July. And we got good participation in that, good response rate. You can see there were three main questions that had been asked. These are questions that had been asked before in a number of different ways and of course, through our phone polling. I will say that of course, the phone polling is a bit more scientific in that it, you know, determines, identifies that they are registered voters in the township and that they are likely voters in the township. We can't have the same verification of the paper surveys, but that's not to dismiss them. The phone survey did indicate that over 60% of residents would support a millage to fix the roads. And that was conducted back in April, I think it was, or end of March, I believe. So with that, this is the final, really the final public hearing after having so many other public meetings before it. Before the task force will meet again next Monday. They will look at the surveys, look at the comments offered, that may be offered tonight and make any, make final revisions to the plan if any, to come back to the board at its August 6 meeting. If there is going to be a ballot question in November, that language would have to be approved at the August 6 meeting. And I have given you a draft in your packet of what that language might, would look like. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or.
James, I have two other comments. It's my understanding nine out of the 16 townships in Livingston County currently have a millage?
Yeah, it's more than half, I think it might be nine or 10.
Okay, that was just one comment, that this isn't new to Livingston County townships having a road millage.
Yes.
And then the second part was, when it comes to the gravel roads, they were going to do some upfront work and then after five years come back and do a second application. So through the 10-year span of the project, those gravel roads will have treatment done two times, correct?
Yeah, that's a very good question. Limestone optimal life is five to seven years before it just breaks down too much into fines. So these gravel road projects are two applications of new limestone over a 10-year period. So they would be improved and kept improved at optimal times.
You mentioned that there were nine townships that currently have road millages. Who around, which of the townships around Heartland have those millages nearby?
Well, Osceola does.
Cahockta does.
And I don't know that any of the other four that touch us, Genoa did not, Brighton does not. Yeah, I don't know that the other ones that touch us have it, but the other, yeah, Cahockta, Conway don't have millages. And Hamburg is putting one on the ballot in November as well. So if this, if this and theirs were to pass, that'd be number 10, 11, or 11 to 12 or one of those.
Any other questions for James at this point? I'd like to open up a public hearing, if you would please come up to the table up here, state your name and your address, please, and then feel free to chat, there's a lot of people here this evening. So if somebody else perhaps, I don't want to say steals your thunder, but has the same comments, you're more than welcome to come up. But we're here just to gather new information, so if somebody's said it before, feel free to come up and maybe reiterate what someone else has already spoken of, just for time constraints and such. So with that, just raise your hand, I'll call you forward and we'd be interested, yes? Good evening.
My name is Lacy Rosaski, I live at 3771 Heartland Hills Drive in Heartland, Michigan at the corner of Hibner and Maple. I don't see Maple anyplace up there, I actually see Hibner. I don't see Avon anyplace up there, I actually see Heartland Road. And so my question is, not actually road related, but street name related. We have roads that we don't have signage for, downtown Heartland does not say Avon Road anywhere, it says Heartland Road. Why are we not just renaming them to the names that they get called?
That's a good question and don't expect an answer from me this evening on these issues, we're here to collect information, but I appreciate that information.
We've lived here 30 years and I found out last year that Hibner, Maple changes to Hibner at Heartland Hills. I never knew that before.
Very good, thank you. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, Paul Schiffko, 700 Maxfield Road, I've lived in the township for 22 years. I apologize for napping up to speed with the whole process, but Maxfield Road, could you give me a little bit of feedback on what you came up with, what you heard about Maxfield Road? Well, I live on. The dirt road part. Yeah, I live on Maxfield, so I'm aware of that situation. At the end of the day, probably the reason Maxfield wouldn't be on this list is traffic counts. Dunham, the stretch of Blaine Road that goes from Maxfield to the end of the pavement was one of the projects that got added in the last round of revisions to the plan. That one had slightly higher traffic counts than Maxfield. It's safe to say, I think, just because my own experience with Maxfield, there are a number of roads like Maxfield throughout the township. And these were projects we had to start somewhere and these were the ones that they started with. Well, that being said too, 10-year lifespan, and this is a 10-year millage, that means, the way I'm hearing it, our road won't get fixed. 10 years from now, it'll be time to fix these roads again. With safety, there's the road commission involved in these decisions at all, and you've mentioned the road counts. Anybody that goes down Blaine has to go down Maxfield. So is the road count considered on Blaine? Yeah, if you go to, yeah, good question, Livingston County Road Commission was very much involved in identifying the projects and they had offered suggestions as to their priority. At the end of the day, the task force is the one that ranked them. Traffic counts are taken on different segments of road, on Maxfield and on Blaine. If you go to the road commission website, you can look at that information, it's right up there. And historical numbers for the average daily traffic counts if you're interested. There was another question, like Reed Road, I know it's already paved, there cannot possibly be as much traffic, well, maybe I'm wrong, but it seems to me like we get all the flow from all the south, you know, the lakes, the Handy and the Round and the Maxfield coming down the dirt road part. Anybody that wants to go to 96 or to Brighton travels down Maxfield Road. It seems to me there's a whole lot more people living in that area than there are up on Bullard Lake or Tyrone Lake, I mean. $150 per household is nothing compared to what it costs me to maintain my vehicle when you have two or three or four cars living on that road. So I would not be opposed to having two mills for, you know, $500 a year, honestly. To have my road put into the condition it should be in, it's 22 years, they've done nothing to that road except make it worse. The road is lower than the ground around it and it's a bowl. And they mentioned extra grading, well, if you grade my road on Monday and it rains on Tuesday or Monday night, what you did is meaningless, as you well know. It's gone, the road is gone. So you can grade it every day and I guess, you know, then it'd just be, you know, in the spring and the fall, it's just mush. So it eats your car up. So again, I would not be opposed to seeing, the question asked, would you be willing to pay more than that to make it fair for everyone? Because I really don't want to, I really don't drive on some of these roads, so never do and never will. And, you know, again, I understand it's a democracy and so that's what it is. Some other questions I have were. A special assessment, tax assessment on our road and say, hey, can we opt for something like that instead? Let our money go towards our own road?
You can put an SAD on your own road. Matter of fact, years ago, in the township, if you wanted your road chlorided, you had to pay for it yourself. That probably goes back, I'm just guessing, 1998 or 1999 is when the township started putting some applications on. So it's my understanding, James, maybe you can fill in, but if you had your neighbors come together, you could probably work out something as an added extra cost with the road commission, it's their road to improve it.
Well, it's funny, when I, I speak to Wayne at the road commission, you know, all the time, he knows who I am because most, some of my neighbors don't understand, if you don't call, you're not going to get any action. I said, why can't we ditch this road? All I want is a ditch, all I want is somewhere for the water to go. He said, oh my goodness, that'd be $2 million. I said, you give me $200,000 and I'll go through that three miles from Heidi Road in Brighton all the way up to the pavement and I'll cut those trees down and I'll give you a ditch on that road. And his next comment was, where's the water going to go? I said, where does it go now? It'd be sitting in a ditch instead of on Maxfield Road and improving the road. So that's what I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
I thought I'd go next, but it's possible because it's Blaine Road that I'm talking about also. And I attended the meeting at the coffee shop, Biggie. And at that time, Blaine Road was not part of the roads. And now I see it is, but you got it a little bit wrong. I meant from M-59 going to, going south. And now Blaine Road is going to be paved, just that short area up to Maxfield. But Blaine Road, south from where Walmart is, it's a mess. I mean, it's a real mess and we do get a lot of trucks, you just, I mean, there's days I'd count four or five trucks and I'm not talking state trucks, I'm talking V-10 wheelers. Because they use Blaine, they don't go through the subdivision of Heartland Shores Estates, but they use Blaine to cut up to go to Maxfield, to go to Commerce, basically try and get over to Milford. So I'm wondering how Blaine got on there?
Just to clarify, those gravel road projects are not to be paved, so Blaine Road, the gravel portion will not be paved. It'll get, it'll get new gravel.
Okay.
And we heard more about that than we heard about the paved section, I guess is the short end.
Okay, more about doing gravel.
Yeah.
Okay, but obviously, the rest of Blaine is going to be able to get done.
Not in these projects, right?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
My name's Charlie Roberts, I live at 903 Mystic Woods Drive, Meadowview Estates. I have a few questions. My first question pertains to the estimated cost of $150 per household in the millage. I'd like to understand how many homes were taken in consideration to come up with that number?
That's our average of everybody involved. Correct, James?
That's the, the average taxable value of all the principal residences in Heartland Township is just shy of $100,000, so it's pretty easy math to get to.
So over the 10-year period, as property taxes go up, there'll be additional funds collected above and beyond the basics of the millage. I'd like to know where that excess funding would go and will it be stated on the ballot where that excess funding will be used?
I don't know the answer to that tonight.
Well, first of all, your property taxes can't go up to greater of inflation or.
But the tax can go up.
The taxable value can.
Right, but if it's a 1.5 millage today and two years from now my home value goes up, the one I pay more than $150, correct?
I will, I'm trying to pull up the ballot language here. The $9 million number that is projected over 10 years is based on obviously $900,000 a year being collected. In the first year, we won't collect $900,000 because the taxable value is lower than that. So it does, it gives some wiggle room for that to grow over time. It can't grow more than inflation, as he said. And there would also be heavily rollback should it happen so that the millage rate actually decrease from 1.5 over the years, should that be triggered. For instance, in Osceola.
Is that a language on the ballot?
It's not, that's just, that's law, that's state law.
State law, okay.
In the constitution. For instance, in Osceola Township, their road millage started out at 1.5 mills. It's currently right around one mill now because if taxable values go up too much, it rolls back the millage rate so that we, so we don't benefit from increased property value, so to speak. But I'll pull up the language, it does, it does give an estimate in the ballot language of what the first year's revenue would be.
$873,000.
$873,000.
All right, and then my next question is on the preventive maintenance for the gravel roads. Who determines preventive maintenance for that that's on schedule? Or is that relying on?
Currently or in this proposal? Currently or in this proposal?
In this proposal.
We would, I mean, these are Livingston County Road Commission's roads. We're stepping in as a fiduciary to try to help fund, but this would be a partnership with the road commission. We would still control the projects and say, this is where that money gets spent. And working with the road commission, we'd identify the best preventive maintenance steps to take to get the best return on that investment.
Okay. And then who is going to be our representative from Heartland with Livingston County Road Commission? Is it this board or individuals or their task force?
Yeah, our main point of contact is Bob West, our public works director. But certainly myself, the board members, we have interaction with the road commission as well. On a day-to-day basis, Bob's working with, Wayne was mentioned earlier, to try to make sure we get the best attention we can get.
And then I, I do see where you pulled out the sidewalks, which was a big pet peeve of mine, because you feel safer, safer roads are more important. And I did hear the word safety mentioned a number of times throughout the evening. I would like to ask though, if we can come up with $100,000 from our general fund, why can we not afford road patrol in this township for sheriff's department? And I'll give you, I'll give you a very good example. My alarm went off two weeks ago at my home, three hours for a deputy to show up at my house. And in the past, there wouldn't have been more than 15 minutes maybe. So I have.
That would be, that's a whole evening session at another night. If you'd like to chat with us sometime, call me, I'd be more happy to tell you the whole.
We also have the undersheriff here. The undersheriff is here. I don't think it's necessarily the, I don't want to get into the debate on that issue, but there's a lot more.
There's a, there's a.
There's much more.
There's a lot of work that was done on that and it continues to be worked on the road patrol. I'd be more than happy to share that with you.
Well, that, that ended all my questions, I do appreciate your time and honesty with me, thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Good evening.
My name is Michelle Checkowitz, I am a nine-and-a-half-year resident of Heartland, I live at 1787 Clover Ridge. I, first of all, I wanted to say that oftentimes I believe that this group has reached out for input from the community and I think you ought to be commended for that. I've received both written surveys, online surveys, notices of public hearings like this and I think that is certainly something worth commending and reaching out for input from our community. I actually came tonight because I read the new proposal and I'm deeply, deeply disappointed that the safer pathways were removed. I really feel that the health and safety and well-being of the members of our community outweighs the risks to our vehicles and things. I really think that it's very important for students, excuse me, for children, adults, families to have safe ways that they can bike, ride, jog throughout our community. Anyone who walks our sidewalks in our community now, as I have, will either find herself with the sidewalk ending abruptly, standing in a swamp, or if you attempt to go on our sidewalks throughout the village, could possibly break an ankle because they are in such bad repair. And I would really implore you to please reconsider, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I have one more question. Good, let's make sure if there's anybody else that would like to go first? Is everybody else? Sir, you can ask another question if you'd like.
With the money that the road commission saved, was that already figured in? You know, for us kicking in all this money?
I don't, to say that the road commission would be saving money by us doing these projects, I don't know is accurate. These are projects that we have no reason to believe that they will be done at, at status quo. The gravel, the new gravel, the new paving, we've looked at the numbers, we've looked at the budget, we, we've seen what history has shown us. We have no reason to believe that any of those projects get done without the millage, so the road commission would not be saving money, per se. This is additional investment by the residents.
Yes?
A couple of things. You said that the sidewalks would be addressed, assuming that the millage has the new funding for them. Did you say whether that being sidewalks were being addressed, what you did, what was, what it is all about?
The, the board has, early, or about midway into the process, the task force made a recommendation to the board to invest about $80,000 more a year out of the general fund into this plan, whether it be roads or sidewalks. Through those conversations, the board decided to up the ante and say that they'd be willing to dedicate $100,000 a year from the general fund into the plan over the 10 years of the plan. As we, as this evolved and the sidewalks came out of the plan, that's where the idea that if the millage were to pass, that $100,000 a year from the general fund could be invested into the sidewalks. The sidewalks that are proposed are shown out roughly on this map. And there are, it's not real easy to follow, but it's basically, everything is, is, you can see there's a patchwork of sidewalks that was mentioned that end, that'd be filling in the gaps on both sides of 59 west of Old 23 to get pathways to the, to the more, to the commercial corridor and the more densely populated areas of the township. And completing that sidewalk that goes along Heartland Road up to the school campus in the village settlement area. And then within the village itself, that, there are a number of sidewalks that we would want to invest in, they're just too small to show on the map, but we want to improve existing sidewalks that are, they're-
Big blocks?
Yes, right. Yeah, sure. Yep, yep. So those are the sidewalks that would be investment out of the general fund, should the millage be approved.
So it would be the whole contract, just the tiny, the, the whole?
Well, the, the task force has, has requested that these projects be done in the first couple of years of the, and, and be bonded for borrowed money, so that, so that that $1 million worth of project, so to speak, can get done in the first couple of years.
So my second question is related to another thing with the Shawland Township, which is, we have a fracture up there, as for a light, and it's getting annoying as well. Is there any possibility of exonerating the real?
MDOT has very strict standards for determining where lights go, even the blinky ones. And it was only because of, you know, incidents and crash data that they said, okay, the yellow flashy light is justified if, if we have no power or influence over that.
Yes, sir.
Lynn Murphy, 939 Mystic Woods Drive. I just want to say that I, I sat on this task force, and there's no guarantees in life, but the guarantee that if the millage doesn't pass, nothing gets done. And I know that we had some very heated discussion, there's people in this room also that were on that task force, that, you know, a group of 20 had some very heated discussion, and we all didn't agree, and it was a consensus. So we, we know that this is not a plan to make everybody happy. We can't make anybody happy. The guarantee is, is that if this millage doesn't pass, then nothing gets done, and things continue to deteriorate. And to answer your question on the M59, that, they're putting a left turn lane in there, and they're going to reevaluate, and then if the traffic count, et cetera dictates, then they're, you may see a light there someday.
Thank you. Anything else this evening? I'd like to close the public hearing, and again, I'd like to thank the, the task force. I'd like to thank everybody that's here this evening to give your input. And this is a community project, and the more input we get for a committee, they can give us a recommendation to see if it's worthy of putting on the ballot this November. So again, if you have other information you'd like to share, you didn't want to do it tonight, feel free to call James Staff, get ahold of someone on the task force. James, this information's all on our website, correct?
And there's, heartlandroads.com. We'll continue to provide any updates at that site, yeah.
And if you want to leave a general comment, you can go to Facebook?
Yeah, we're on Facebook. We have our hartlandvoices.com is a place where any residents can hit, offer suggestions and ideas.
Okay.
Mr. Supervisor, before you close the hearing, I'd like to request that James re-explain the cost per homeowner. I, I don't want the impression that people are going to walk out and say, it's going to cost them $150 a year for this. It's per thou, $100,000. So if you have a house that's worth $300,000, it's going to cost $450 a year. Is that correct?
No, this is-
How's that work then?
So, yeah, if you have a house that's, say, worth $300,000, in theory, your taxable value would be $150,000, half of that. And if that were the case, then 1.5 mils on that would be about $225.
$225, yeah. So it's not $150 set amount. I just want, want people to have a clear understanding.
Taxable value is going to be about half of your true cash value.
Thank you for coming tonight. If there's nothing else from the board, we'll move on to our next agenda item. This is applicant SP number, special, what's SP?
Site plan.
Site plan, right. I'm trying to get the new code. We haven't had a site plan in a while.
Yeah, we haven't had a site plan in a long time.
Site plan number 524, Sea Chestnut Development Plan, Development Conceptual Plan. But this, I'd like to turn this over to our applicant and Planning Commission member, Larry Hopkins, for a preview of the proposed, this is a plan development?
Yeah.
Correct? So this is the conceptual plan for that?
Right, so this property is, already exists with a PD designation on it, similar to, if you remember, the River Church, where it had already been rezoned to PD, but it doesn't have an associated site plan with it. So they're still going through the same process as a PD, it just won't involve a rezoning portion of it. So it's three visits to the Planning Commission, three visits to the board. They've been to the Planning Commission for a conceptual review in June. They're now on our agenda for the same conceptual review. They're planning on building, the proposal is for 18 home sites on property located nine acres between Autumn Woods subdivision and San Marino subdivision. There's a piece of property-
Excuse me, you can't hear anything that's being said.
I'm sorry? It's conceptual plan at the, at the board level. It's for, on a nine-acre piece of property located between Autumn Woods and San Marino on the south side of M59. It was previously owned by Presbyterian Church with plans to build a church there, but they no longer plan to do that. So they're here tonight to hear our comments. They're planning, as you see the plan on the, on the wall there, a cul-de-sac with 18 home sites. It, the size lots are in line with the Autumn Woods subdivision. And they're proposing, it would have sewer and water. I believe it already has a water assessment on the property, and they would need to buy additional, or sewer reuse for the property.
And I apologize, your, the applicant is actually here, and I typically would introduce, have yourself introduce yourself, I apologize. So, welcome this evening, and your name is, sir?
David.
Hi, David.
And I'm Steve Grohl.
And I, and again, I apologize for, for not introducing yourself to our, our board and the folks here today. Larry, give a quick background, if you have anything you'd wish to add at this point?
I guess a couple of things real quickly. We were at the Planning Commission on the 26th of June, had a really good conversation about this piece of property, and, you know, maybe what the township would like to see on it in general. Larry mentioned that it was proposed to be a church site at one time, and Mr. Grohl always bought it, and would like to do single-family homes. One of the obstacles that we do have with it is the township has a two-and-through policy for utilities, and there was also some discussion about wanting some off-site utilities. And those were some things, we had a lot of discussion about those at the Planning Commission, which kind of threw the performer off on this. So we really wanted to see from the board if we could have an opportunity to relook at that, or maybe look at some other opportunities for the piece. Problem being with only 18 lots, there's really not a lot of mass to it. We do have to build a new entrance off of 59. You know, we do have to bring water and sewer into the site already. So the two-and-through is really one big concern. I don't know if you have an area, I do have one here with me. I don't know, the two-and-through, I believe from an engineering standpoint is a good policy. In this particular case, I'm not so sure that it makes a lot of sense. Reason being-
Can you, can you keep with that so that it can go?
Yeah, if you put it on the table, I can project that.
Water.
Unless we can, uh, see the sign. Okay, this one is a little bit weird, but this is the nine acres that we're talking about. To the east is Autumn Woods, to the west here is the San Marino, which extends, very extensively. The two-and-through policy is basically, water needs to be brought up to the end of the property for future extension. And like I mentioned, in most cases, it makes perfect sense to do that. In this case, it would be for the purpose of future developments to the west, the country line is at Hager Road. This stretch right here, along San Marino- Is nearly 4,000 feet. There's really only one vacant area over here. It does have some gravel, and there's a facility, I'm not quite sure what that is. But certainly, I don't believe anybody that would develop this in any manner would need to extend water from this point, 4,000 feet into a development. The risk currently, water through this subdivision extends, and it's called a sack. The River Church is in this area. They do have- Have water, extensive water and- And that, so, so we're really looking at water being at this point right now. So anybody that did come in here in the future is more likely to have a lot of gravel across the street. The cost to do this extension is- About $40,000, and I do have some, some estimates on that. And if you have the contract, if you apply those same numbers to bring water along San Marino, you'd be looking at about $600,000, so a pretty substantial investment. I don't really see that it makes sense to bring water up to, you know, to that property line at this point. If for some reason San Marino did need to have water in the future, they are in wells right now. If we were to say water means stuff in Autumn Woods, right up in the property line in this location. So it would make perfect sense, and it's a little bit damp in here to bring in, and just kind of, we're not true. To service those areas. The other offsite improvement that was talked about was connecting this water main to the Autumn Woods subdivision. Again, we don't feel that it's necessary for this development, certainly Autumn Woods- Is built out and functioning fine on its own today. That's about another $40,000 investment. So those two, in and of themselves, add about $4,500 per lot. Mr. Grohl can speak to the performer of these lots a little bit more. But with 18 lots, again, we're really at the point of whether or not it's economically viable to move forward with those offsite improvements. And we feel that if we didn't have the burden of those, we could certainly move forward with a 18-unit, single-family development, very similar to what Autumn Woods is, eight-foot frontages, 12,000 square foot lots, you know, homes in the $330,000 range. So that's really what we're, we're looking for some input from the board for this evening, so we can kind of determine the path that we would like to move forward with.
Can I get some clarification? Can I get some clarification just real quick? I thought you said there was this sewer assessment, or water assessment on this already?
Isn't that correct?
Yeah, there is a water assessment for-
But the water isn't there?
It's at the property line. It's right there. So we do have to bring it along to the entrance into the development. So we already have to extend it to our entrance and into our development.
So your, your question is the two-and-through?
Yeah.
And the one's $40,000 to tie it back into?
Yes, to extend it to the westerly end of our property, you know-
Was $40,000?
Right.
So I, and-
That's the additional length passed where you would need to extend it?
Correct, yep, yep. It's an additional 245 feet.
Well, I came up with $2,200. That took $40,000 and divided by 18 lots.
Well, the other, the other offsite improvement that the township is asking for is offsite in this area to tie into Autumn Woods.
I thought, I thought that's where the $40,000 was.
No.
It's a loop. If I may, Mr. Supervisor, just, these, these two issues were identified, staff did have a chance to meet with the engineers, and I think there was some communication back to the applicant on these issues, that, and there was an email in your packet to this effect that we believe that, you know, through further conversation, we could potentially resolve these. Two-and-through is the policy of the township, and certainly, this property is the beneficiary of that policy, because it is at their property line. There's a valid question on the table of whether San Marino would connect, and whether it would connect, and how that would look at the, or what, what one potential option has been put on the table would be for, for the, the extension to the other, to the western property line not to be put in at this time, and that by simply doing a performance guarantee or a, a deposit with the water system, should that ever be needed, that could, could potentially suffice to meet what the standard that other, other developers have had to meet. The looping is, is also an important issue, and it, it really is, the two-and-through is a pretty basic policy that we've, we've held to. The looping in the system, as you know, has, has been an issue in areas where there is no looping. We've had water hammer in a number of areas, and the, even the suggestion that we would add further developments to the west off of one line without having some looping involved would just exacerbate a problem we've had already. So looping is important. We think it's important to this development, as well as the, the water system as a whole. And what we've offered to the applicant is if we had an estimate to that effect, and it looks like we have that tonight, that we could even discuss a potential cost sharing in that, because it is that important. We are at the conceptual phase. It's, it would be, it's very common for these types of issues to be, pop up, and we still have, have to resolve those. I believe that we can resolve them through further conversations. I, I would not, after discussing with staff and the engineers, we think those options are really ones we ought to pursue.
Trustee Clay, you had a question?
Yeah, I have, I have a question, and this may be more of a question for Larry. What are the setbacks at Autumn Woods? If you don't know, I, I just noticed in the write-up here that the setbacks are considerably less than what we normally would have with this density of housing.
Well, it is very similar to what Autumn Woods is. I mean, we talked to them about the staying away from 59.
Yeah. If you remember, there's a-
If you remember, there's a house in Autumn Woods that seems really close in discussions in the past about widening of M59. We were, we told them early on that you're going to need to keep back at least as far as that house from 59. But the lot size is, square footage-wise, is in line with what Autumn Woods, as far as the specific setbacks of Autumn Woods, that wasn't part of the...
Well, I just, I thought I read in here that normally we would have 30 or 15 feet between houses or 30 feet altogether, 15 and 15 from each house and this is, putting houses basically 20, 20 feet apart or 10 on each side of the...
That's, I mean, that's what they're proposing, that's my word.
And obviously, there's no other connection for the road.
And Fire Marshal did identify that in his review letter and the Planning Commission discussed it and didn't really see where there was a possibility of that connection without having to lose one of the lots and based on what the applicant has said about the feasibility of the project, he feels that that requirement would probably make it not work, so...
I can tell you, the Autumn Woods, when you look at the road widths in Autumn Woods and the houses in Autumn Woods, and you look at what is required and was required in San Marino and in Millpoint, which is a high-density residential development, Autumn Woods is significantly different and when you get cars parked on the road in Autumn Woods, you could hardly get another car through. And I just see a problem because no matter how many of the regulations on these, you know, that are put in the condo development documents, people still park on the street. And now, you've added to a situation where if an emergency truck has to get in there, you got cars parked on the street and with Autumn Woods, you actually have a loop around. At least you have a loop that comes around and comes back out and a split driveway coming out.
Right.
I don't think that's what's proposed here, correct?
No, it's not.
So, I have some considerable, I have some concerns with, you know, number of houses in this development and how they're sort of compacted in there, but I'm just raising that point. Have, has there been any elevations on the terms of the type of buildings or houses that are going to be in there? I heard the number that it was going to be basically 300,000, but what kind of product has, has that been explored at all?
Well, I think that Mr. Grohl can probably answer that. It wasn't a large focus of the Planning Commission's discussion at this point, but he did say that he was looking to do something similar to what he's doing somewhere else or he may have some.
Yeah, we do have a community under development out at, in the Heartland School District, it's up at, I don't know how many of you are familiar with Irish Hills, it's just north of Clyde Road. They have 15 homes in there that we've built or that are under construction, 6 under construction there now. They are, you know, they're brick and stone fronts, they have, most of them are finished blockouts, about 98% of them are finished. They have over 50% basin fronts, concrete driveways, they're highly energy-efficient design, become standard with a lot of features like crown and granite and hardwood, recessed lighting, stained appliances, finished, let ours in the basement for their homes, it's a standard package that we build. It comes up to about $135 a square foot. Seems to be what the market is having.
Are these going to be two-story and one-story or are they all going to be two-story?
The market is really asking for ranches.
That's what I thought. So, right now, the market is pushing more for the one-story ranches, so...
We just, every time we build a storey and a half spec and sits there, the colonial, we've got a colonial that's been there four months and nobody's even...
Okay.
Looks like ranches.
Thank you.
So, Larry, where are we in the process? This is conceptual.
Right, so this is your opportunity to give them your comments on what you see in front of you and things that you maybe not even see in front of you, but as Trustee Kellany has shared his opinions on some things. And then, it will go back to a preliminary review at the Planning Commission level where a lot more information will have to be put together in the plan, a lot more detailed information, I should say.
Is there any opportunity to have this be extended into Autumn Woods to eliminate a curb cut on 59?
I don't know if there's a...
I mean, there is some common areas in Autumn Woods that are, I mean, maybe if he shows us that thing again, it seems to me that...
Have you explored that at the Planning Commission?
We did not.
Will you have to have a D cell lane?
We'll have to have a D cell, yes.
So, if there was an, I mean, that can get to be quite expensive?
Well, not a left-turn lane or not an extension of a left-turn lane, but just the standard D cell lane is all that...
Well, for us to drive that road a lot of times, without a left-turn lane there, it's very, very difficult to get in and out of those subdivisions that don't have the left-turn lanes.
Sure, right, right.
There seems to be more and more people getting injured and rear-end collisions along there.
That would be something the state would have to decide on.
Right, and they did speak to MDOT and it doesn't meet the warrants for them to require a left-turn lane for it, so...
There was no plan for Autumn Woods to extend at any point, was there, to that lot?
Not that I know of.
Unfortunately, in the condo documents for Autumn Woods, there was no outlot.
There's no out, okay.
Right, and in addition to that, the utilities weren't extended to this property either for whatever reason.
It doesn't look like there's even an opportunity to consider that.
Yeah, I mean, that...
Would have been nice to have that, off that cul-de-sac or something, but even where the, that's somebody's backyard, but there's a gap between...
Right there.
The width of the road, what is the width of the...
Where's the storm drainage to the south?
Because that's the problem of Autumn Woods, the width of the road.
The storm drainage for Autumn Woods?
No, no, for your development. Where's the storm drainage going to go?
We're going to have, part of the property drains toward 59, so we're going to have a small basin up here, the rest of it's going to be in behind and there are some structures that were left in Autumn Woods.
They have changed.
For all of this drainage.
Is there easements to permit that?
There's no off-site easements, no. No, but our drainage area for this was computed in the storm drainage board.
Was computed, okay.
Right, right, we're going to have our own detention.
I see what might be concerned with some of these developments sometimes is we, that's often the forgotten infrastructure, is that fact that, you know, we build these detentions and I think we're going to have a lot of problems someday because there's never real clear who ends up cleaning out the detention when it needs to be cleaned out and...
Sure.
Water starts spilling over and affecting other property owners. I just want to be sure we have adequate drainage there as well.
Your property line doesn't go to the tree line there, does it?
It actually goes past the tree line.
North and south, the north and south, right about the tree line, yeah, the property line is right in that tree line there.
So, where's the drainage in relation, would that be behind these?
There's going to be a small pond up in the corner.
There, and then...
And then down this area in here, which is the lower part of the side.
So, behind all those homes that are right there?
Correct.
And it's going to be a detention, not a retention, so it's not going to go anywhere, it's going to have to go into the ground?
It's going to be a detention. The all it will be, there's catch bases in these backyards, there's an open in section right here where this drainage was figured to go into and from there, it's piped underground and it goes into this basin and a series of others.
Oh, okay.
Isn't there a significant elevation change where your road will be coming in?
There is, there's an enakement along there, yes.
Okay.
It gets more severe the farther west you go.
So, would you envision that as leaving that drain up high and then cutting out your...
Well, we can only, we're only allowed to go, you know, it's so steep.
Right.
It is going to cut through that and back a little bit there, right? And that's one of the reasons that the entrance is really as far east as, you know, as we could get it.
So, it's not exactly across from Cullen Road, is it?
No.
Jogged down?
Correct. Cullen Road is pretty much lined up with the west property line, right here, it's right across and there's Cullen Road.
I'm just wondering if it'd be safer to make your entrance way there?
Well, unfortunately, we don't have the other, I mean, we don't have the property to do that. Our property line is right here, this is owned by the people in San Marino.
Any other comments this evening? Matt, you have any other comments tonight? I guess that's all we have this evening for conceptual planning. Larry, would you like to maybe reiterate what the next process is? I'm sure you go back to the Planning Commission.
Right, done.
And if you guys have any comments yourselves?
We'll pursue it any farther than tonight, but also, we've been trying to get a read on the township's feeling on these off-site improvements if we, if the township's position is firm on the two-and-through project dies, if the township's position on the loop is firm, the project dies.
So, in this evening, I don't know if we have enough, I don't have enough information myself to make that decision. Perhaps we have to, you said staff was working on some different options and perhaps the Planning Commission can work on some different ideas. I don't want to close the door on it without having some, myself, without having further information from somebody within the organization.
Yeah, staff, and you have the summary of what we believe is, would be a proper course that's less than what's here. If what he's saying is that the $80,000 added together, if any of it, if that's even less than $80,000 but still more than zero, the project dies, then I don't think that we would offer that. Our recommendation is still to do something on both fronts. We think there's a couple of reasonable options that we can look at if, and those would be consistent with what this board has done in the past, so, not, if the board thinks that we should pursue other options, it'd be good to hear that, but they're not too complicated of issues. I think you have them in front of you and you have some cost estimates to go with them. I think the two-and-through, we could, again, we could look at, instead of actually installing it, just putting some funds on deposit, should that ever be needed and not actually putting it in. And the looping, now that we have some numbers, we could take a look and talk about potential cost sharing on that. Neither one of those equals $0 for the developer in this case. If that's, still makes it, if more than zero is not acceptable and it will, the project won't go forward, then I don't know that I could offer you a better answer.
Can you explain the looping a little bit more? You mentioned the hammer, water hammer is a potential problem or a problem we already have and why looping makes sense or is important?
Our water system is basically a cross for all intents and purposes. It goes north, south, east, west, down the main corridors and when water, you know, starts flowing down those pipes and it doesn't have somewhere to go, that's where water hammer comes into effect. And we have a number of situations where, you know, pressure-reducing valves and that water pressure breaking through and causing breakages and leaks and fire suppression systems that go over pressure and all sorts of things and we're constantly chasing that. By looping the water system, you give that water pressure opportunity to go somewhere. It can kind of lose its momentum, you know, by just, you know, kind of going around and loop and that's why it's important that we aggressively address those issues.
We actually did have a couple of options to present to you tonight, but we're just trying to figure out where to go with our engineering for presentation through the Planning Commission. And David's suggestion, we looked at, there's really two housing types that are viable on the market today, both are ranch plans. One is, one is a 2,500 square foot ranch priced in the early to mid-3s, the other is a 1,700 square foot ranch priced in the mid-2s. You're seeing a lot of success with that product on Lanson Road at the mills of Osceola that's being developed and built out by Polk. They've sold 52 units in the first seven months of this year, which is extraordinarily high in production rates, which is telling us that that lot has a lot of oxygen. There's a way to pay for everything with enough density and enough product being sold. So, at 18 homes, single-family like we have in front of you, we can barely build the infrastructure, build the road and come up with a determined investment after building all these homes. Any off-site improvements demanded by the township, we just, why would you do it? We don't need the exercise to go through a two-year buildup and make money. So, frankly, it doesn't have any kind of feasibility financially, other than, and this was again David's suggestion, cost sharing, which I think was suggested by the township at our last meeting, on the looping proportion. And what we would be willing to do is to pay for the extension of the loop through the property, all the way to our property line, which is about half of that portion of the process that you have in front of you. So, if the township would entertain a cost sharing issue like that, the looping portion, I think, would be workable. The two-and-through makes no sense because first of all, there's nobody on the other side of it ever, Autumn Woods is built out and there's a major wetland beyond that, so the chances of anybody needing $40,000 worth of pipe that we would have to put in, that kills our project, are slim to none. If you just look at, look at the aerial and say, well, who's ever going to need that water? So, I don't believe that I would be willing to fill the bond or be liable for that additional cost at some point in the future. It just wouldn't make any sense to us because it would just drive the project upside down. So, we can do the cost sharing on the looping, we can't do two-and-through and it doesn't need to be done anyway, there's no engineering reason for it, no demand for it. So, those are just the simple facts of this issue and I'm just trying to get a read on, we have a lot of interest in the property from these assisted living facilities. We don't have to build a residential community here, maybe an assisted living facility would make more sense. I'm certain that that would probably support financially some more of this off-site improvement cost that you're talking about, is just have more units to absorb the cost. I mean, at 18 units, there's just not a whole lot of meat on the bone in this project to make any money. It's just that simple. And we're okay, if the township doesn't want to blend on that, we're okay to just walk away from it, let it sit there. But if we want to see something happen, then we've just got to come into you with my hand and say, this is what I need. I need, I need to be able to not do this two-and-through thing and I need to be able to, we can put $15,000 or $20,000 into off-site improvements as far as the looping system goes, but that's the end of the wick. It's just money that I have to bear. So, I'm trying to give you the, you know, not waste it for these time, go to some meetings and then we find out in the back here and you're saying, you know, for these reasons you don't want to do the project, doesn't make any sense for David, now you go through all this engineering, if that's never going to fly. So, that's why we're here, just here to take the temperature and see if, does this make any sense to you, are we moving forward? I certainly am, I have time, what to do, I'm saying, I don't want to move forward if that's, if that's the judgment of the board, then this property just comes off, off front center and goes in the land bank and we just sit here and hope something happens. Maybe somebody will come and want a for assisted living or church someday, but I certainly can't develop a residential living, I don't have to pay for the interest.
He'd still have to bring sewer in?
Yes.
Does that have to go two-and-through as well?
I don't have, I think the sewer is...
Sewer on the other side of the street?
No, the sewer's on our side of the street.
Is it, right next to your water?
Yeah, we're bringing it, the sewer's here, we're bringing it up and down. And there was never any mention of two-and-through for the sewer.
Okay. It's not going to need a lift station out there or anything?
Well, you know what, unfortunately, there is a pump station in Autumn Woods. Again, we don't have access to it and the sewer is only deep enough to get gravity sewer about halfway down this street. The rest is going to have to be serviced with full pressure, so, you know, it would have been... have been really, really nice if we would have had a road stub, if we would have had sewer brought to us, if we would have had water brought to us when Autumn Woods was developed. For whatever reason, it unfortunately was not on any of those accounts.
Where's the water line at right now that you got to hook up to?
The water line is out front.
So water line has been brought to you?
Well, it has, but it's not been, you know, they're asking for it to be looped through, you know, into Autumn Woods.
Yeah, but you just said water wasn't brought to you. Water has been brought to you.
Yeah, water wasn't brought to any place where we're being asked to loop it through. So it has to be extended through Autumn Woods in a different location into this property.
But to be honest with you, I'm sure Autumn Woods, when they were sitting here, was probably concerned about the money that they spent on a main that went along M-59 that didn't service any of their units as well. Then you are benefiting from that.
Well, the only difference is...
So to say that it wasn't brought to you, I don't think is fair.
Well, it was brought out front, but I also think that this piece was part of the same PUD that Autumn Woods was in. I think it was all one PUD at the time and, and I realize there was plans to be a church there or something different. You know, but again, if the looping system was so important, it would have been nice if it had been brought through on the backside of this property where we're being asked to run through and connect to Autumn Woods.
And you're willing to bring it to the property line?
I believe so, yeah.
So the township would have to...
I, I think I'd be, I'd consider the looping because I think that's important for the overall, you know, benefit of the water system and the other residents on the water system. Didn't we, don't we have some funds that came as a part of special, as part of the PD from Autumn Woods? Like special benefits to the township?
I'm not aware of any. That was before my time.
Okay. But in any case, I, I do have some concerns about the setbacks, but I'd also know that Mill Point is 20 feet, they're 20 feet, the homes are 20 feet apart from there. If these were two-story, I'd be a little more concerned with being 20 feet, but again, Mill Point has two-story homes in there as well. I'm still concerned about emergency access, but I'm not totally opposed to the project. And it's...
It's still a scary environment out there for new development. Nobody really knows what's going to happen with the block. The lots we're building on at Irish Hills, for example, we bought it tax auction two years ago for $500 of us, fully approved, roads, water, sewer, turnkey, home billing permit in the middle house. We're netting about $45,000 on this home, technically, all expenses are paid. That's getting the block for free, just to pull this road and infrastructure and build these homes. We'll spend about $30,000 on the block without any of these offsite improvements. It's interesting. So that leaves us with about $15,000 margin. Now, the only way I can see making sense out of it is if the market appreciates next year, maybe we're going to be okay. I'm trying to help you understand how delicate the market is and how fragile it is for developers. What you asked for previous to 2005 probably was pretty feasible for a lot of people that was in that community. I wouldn't argue with you about these offsite improvements in the lease. I would think they were fairly reasonable. But today, we're operating in a very different environment. The margins are down, the costs are still the same if you hire and build. And we don't know what's going to happen at this time next year. So we're asking, you know, we're just asking to consider the totality of the environment. We're trying to do something. Everyone thinks we're kind of nuts trying to bring in new development. We own the property for a good price, we can try it. You know, if it doesn't, if we don't make any money, at least we won't, you know, grow. But it certainly becomes totally unattractive when we're looking at it. If there's going to be a lot of heartburn with the project and a lot of offsite costs, we don't, there's something fresh to fry.
Would you be required then, James, that two and through, that frontage go all the way across their property to San Marino?
That's what he's talking about, is it'd be another $40,000, take that water line to the Western Property Line.
Got it. Because of the defeat, the purpose of the, of the two and through, I'd say have another...
That's not part of our, that's not part of our ordinance, so that's part of our policy for extending infrastructure, nor no different than when we, when a developer's asked to pave a road.
Put in a sidewalk.
Or put in a sidewalk, but it, in this case, this is underground infrastructure, it's going to a place where it'd never, it'd never be used.
Right.
Well, we talked, it's less than 50% chance, but I mean, it's not, I'd say unlikely. It's not an unlikely...
Okay, highly unlikely, but with the church going in, with the one church going in, he makes a very good point. I mean, you have infrastructure already on the other side and if it needed to be extended, because you're not going to extend that, that water to, I mean, is there any plans to extend water to San Marino? I don't, I don't think they're part of the...
Supposedly in our water master plan. Now, I'm not saying that I think that is, makes sense. I'm just saying that's why the policy would be in effect because that is in the future.
It's not unheard of and certainly, I mean, it's communities southeast Michigan that have long established private wells that decided to connect to the water system and it certainly happens. Is it likely to happen? That's a fair statement. That's why we believe that by just, you know, simply making a provision for that at a later time, should the need arise, could be a part of the conversation. And even though, I mean, yes, we're extending the water line through the, through the church property here and connection might be happening here, we would have to have a serious cause for pause to make sure that all those connections are having loops as well. And, I mean, usually a built-out water system is going to have water main on both sides of the road to provide that looping.
Provide the loop.
Throughout the system. And we don't, by not putting that in, that's one more obstacle to potentially having that. It's not, our master plan, water master plan, imagines that it is very possible that developments happen along Hackle Road that would be fed by the water system someday. And there is...
Let me ask Mr. Brolin a question. You, you had mentioned other projects you were considering, you were looking at. Several years ago, I know you built a nice condominium project in the South Pioneer area. Beautiful place. Have you thought about condominiums here?
We have. The environment in condos out there is, is really a problem more with the lending community than the building community. It's very difficult to get FHA approval and attach to condos.
Are you aware that the township is doing a study right now to see what types of developments we are lacking in this area and...
Love to see it.
Yeah, I don't know when that's going to be complete, but you could get with James on that. But one of the things that I have been talking about is there, there is no community here in Heartland that allows our senior citizens to downsize in a nice community. We don't have any. And something like that might fit into that particular piece of property. I don't know.
I totally agree with you, Joe. The, the success you're seeing at the develop of Osceola is unprecedented. The injection rate over there is just amazingly high. I think the market is headed towards senior living, downsizing, maintenance, reenvironment. You know, one of the proposals I was going to put in front of you tonight was to increase the density, to reduce the size of the lots and increase the density, which gives us a few more dollars to work with. Look, I studied, I have been studying, have studied the Polk model and they spent millions and millions of dollars on marketing, case studies and test studies and progress groups. It's incredible. When they come up with a floor plan, there's a lot of thinking that they're doing just behind it. Those homes are 35 feet wide, 42 feet up, and two-car attached front loaded garage, 1,700 square feet on the main floor, 1,400 square feet finished on the level. They sell for $260, about as fast as they can build. We can do 28 of those exact units right here and I think that that is exactly the market that we would be addressing, seniors that want to downsize the maintenance reenvironment. I would love nothing better than to bring that site plan with the Planning Commission and be able to offer some more dollars for this, for this offsite improvement, stuff that you're looking for, and bring more market to the product. And, you know, if, if there's some oxygen for that, we could certainly prepare a concept plan, percolations and elevations and floor transfers and floors. Look at participating in the looping of the water main. I still don't think under any circumstances two and three is necessary. Someone, someone would be looking at $640,000 to run in 50 square feet to get to the property that's mostly wetland. I just don't see that ever happening. And if it does, they can still pull it across the property and it's probably easy. So it's not like a deal killer for some future use. It's just a deal killer for us. We can't go forward if that's what we're required to do. So I don't know if the board has any, any interest in looking at a project like that, but I mean, I would be interested in building 28 units, 1,700 square feet maintenance reliving for seniors, not downsizing.
That would be a non-maintenance community where they wouldn't have...
It would have zero exterior responsibility.
Yeah.
So all site bound open, 100% titanium, plant association, no paint, all brick and stone and permanent materials. We've already got the model plans for it. I just, I just didn't know what flavor the township would be on that. I would love to do the project. We could do 28 of those and they're very comfortable.
My, just my initial concern is the neighboring community that's already been established. You have, you know, I'm not sure, I'm not saying it does fit or doesn't fit. You'd have to really kind of digest that because the density would be double what's next, right next door.
It's an adult community.
We don't want to battle. We don't want to go through 100 meetings. We don't want standing room bowling crowds. I'm not interested in that. You know, if it's 18 homes we can do, we'll do it. If it's 28, we'd love to do that. We will participate in the looping, you know, as much as we financially can.
Well, I would, I could, I could consider you bringing it through the property line and then the township consider bringing the water in to, to connect it. I think the loop is important for the system itself, for the longevity of it. And just on the surface, the 18 homes makes more sense to me because that's what's surrounding it. And I think trying to put a different use between those, it might be something today, but it might be something different down the road that could have a potential negative impact on those, on that community. So that's just my two cents worth on the... Joe, you have any comments? Larry?
I kind of agree with what you said. I think that throwing that density in the middle of those other established residential districts doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. It also does make a whole lot of sense to me to bring the water main all the way over to San Marino because I don't ever see San Marino. And I guess I shouldn't use the word ever to make James happy, but as Joe said, I, very unlikely that water ever runs through San Marino. And I think it makes sense that the water system sharing some of that looping costs if it's a benefit to the whole system itself.
Joe Filani? You think whether...
I have no...
Matt?
I think that the more densely populated area on this lot would not be a problem for me. We've got apartments just down the street. We've got a senior citizen senator almost across the road, which is very populated, dense. And I, you know, it's residential, it's not like we're trying to put commercial or something in there. Especially if it's all professionally groomed, things like that, it's probably going to look better than some of the adjoining backyards. I don't think it's a problem.
Has the Planning Commission, has the Planning Commission considered that at all?
No, I don't think so.
Planning Commission as a whole has not.
As a conceptual...
They've probably never even discussed it.
I think in a nutshell, like maybe you're hearing this evening, I can't speak for everyone, but that the board seems to be open to different options and that the door is open to potentially cost sharing without making any commitment, but that's, I think, I didn't hear anybody say anything against that for the betterment. I don't know if what we discussed this evening gave you any clear vision, but I think that the boards would be willing to consider multiple options.
What happens to your left turn requirement if you go up in density?
I haven't ran the numbers yet. I think 28 would still put us under. Certainly if it went to anything assisted living or something like that, it would require that. We were under the warrant for a left turn lane, but not, you know, not by a lot.
That's why I was hoping there would be some way to put it at Cullen Road, the entrance way, because there's already left turn lanes there. Even if it's not a direct diagonal across, that left turn lane there is probably wide enough that it might help.
Yeah, it, it closes down pretty quick after Cullen Road.
Does it?
Yeah, because when you're sitting in Cullen Road...
Yeah, there is that.
Yes, there's some more driveway cuts, it'll be pretty wide there.
There's also a pretty significant bluff right there that goes straight to get to Cullen Road.
Any other comments tonight?
I do have a question for James. What are we going to do with this estimate that was provided?
Yeah, we'll go back and talk with staff and the engineer about the, the idea was talked about tonight, that could potentially take the looping to their property line and the township participate on the Autumn Woods side. We'll see if that makes sense and keep you posted.
And Larry, does the, is there another date for the Planning Commission to look at this again, schedule again?
No. It, it usually has been a supervisory policy just to make a statement in the record that if we feel that they've completed the conceptual plan at the board level, so...
We've talked about a lot of things. I don't know if we completed anything. I mean, we've talked about different ideas if that's what the conceptual plan...
Well, just that they don't have to come back to us to further talk about this conceptually would be the only, you know, that they could move on in the process.
Is there a consensus that they've moved on in the process? I believe so too, yes. Yes, schedule it with, with Dave.
Yeah, Dave will be in touch to schedule the next one.
Rob West has a comment.
Thank you. Just wanted to clear up just a few minor issues. The, the reason that the sewer main was not required to be brought to and through was because it already exists across the frontage of the property. So the water is the only one in question here and that's going off of Livingston County GIS prints. I haven't actually field verified that, but their prints do show it going actually further west than their west property line. So that's why that's not an issue in this particular case. Second thing is obviously there's two different water main issues on the table here. As Public Works Director, my recommendation would be that the looping take priority. I feel that that certainly is going to behoove the whole township's system versus just an extension for future development. And I just wanted to let you guys know that.
What's the size of the pipe on the road on 59?
The, the water or the sewer?
The water.
The water is a 12-inch water main.
And what is it back in, in Autumn Woods?
Eight inch.
Eight inch, okay.
Yes. So what, what my recommendation would be is to extend the 12-inch and then just tee into it with the eight inch heading sound. But I certainly, I just wanted to put emphasis that that would, it's, it's a huge benefit to the system as a whole in eliminating one of the dead ends, especially at that particular end of the system. So thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing else from the board, thank you for your interest in our community.
Thank you.
Okay, item number nine is our blight and nuisance ordinance. Manager Whitman?
I think a supervisory, this was tabled from a previous meeting. An ad hoc committee of the board met a couple times to look at some language changes and that's reflected in what you have before you and there was some consensus to move forward with that. I think, and I understand that Treasury Horning had some comments and feedback for the board to consider regarding one of the sections, specifically the fireworks, and had requested that the board consider tabling that for that reason. I would offer a couple options to the board. You could either table that to another meeting so that she can express those comments and concerns. I've also put in front of you just the simple, another simple approach would be to go ahead and approve the ordinance without the fireworks section in there. And that could be added at a later time if the board saw fit and then we could move forward with having the blight ordinance. Practically speaking, because we, our ordinance enforcement officer position is vacant, having the blight ordinance sooner than later is not necessarily a practical difficulty to us if you were to choose to table it. I would be remiss to say that I would be disappointed somewhat that we do on a section that... that we've talked about and we've had opportunity to talk about before. I wish that we would have had that conversation at an earlier time. We talked about the fireworks last year when the state law changed, and I believe that we're offering the solution that there was some consensus on, albeit several months ago. And so that's, I guess, my duty to say as much in that regard. So whatever pleases the board to either table it or approve the ordinance without the fireworks section.
I would move the table so that Kathy has a chance to kind of voice her concerns, and then we can take it up then. Can we table it to the next meeting, please?
I'll support that.
Got a motion to table and support. Halls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. James, where would that...
The information is on the website. The ordinance can be found by looking at the agenda packet for tonight's meeting. A copy of the draft of that blight ordinance is in there. Most notably, what had previously been our nuisance ordinance was not very specific to blight. The regulations here get more specific about addressing blighted properties and to bring it into line with what other ordinances are in other communities.
Well, one of the reasons I have the question is because in our subdivision, several people got notice that something on their lap was blight. We did, we had a travel, apparently the blight was gone in the story. We have a neighbor who is on the corner apartment of the house, and he used to keep their travel trailer tucked very tightly, tree brush on governor, and a garage tucked in, didn't stay much. Somebody came by, told him to keep it there, and he worked with the blight ordinance, but they were allowed to keep it on the other side of their home, so on the tour, home. We now have a very high-sighty travel trailer that we can see at all angles going down the street instead of on its top, and it's become disheveled because that is the frontage. They had the frontage there. And is there room to get something like that against it? Well, schedule was recommended, nobody can see it.
We certainly take your comments, and we have a representative planning commission and the ordinance review committee can consider that and potential future revisions of the ordinance.
I have a question. If a trailer is parked close to a garage, is that feasible? We have one, and I don't know if the person, I hear sometimes the mother is living in there, sometimes she isn't. And is there an ordinance against people living in a trailer on, in a subdivision, and a trailer is, you know, close to the garage of the residence?
I don't know the ordinance by heart, but if I, if we can get your name and contact information, be happy to follow up with you to get an answer to that.
Also, most subdivisions, and I don't know how old the subdivision would be, have covenants or bylaws that run with the development, especially more in the newer ones. A lot of them have prohibitions and homeowners association.
Our association does not follow the bylaws.
Well, I...
And I need to tell you why.
Well, I understand that, and, but that's one of the aspects of living in a condo development that they can be more restrictive than a lot of ordinances, but it's up to the homeowners association to enforce their, those rules. And if they don't, they don't. There's not much we can do about that.
If you want to touch base with our communications director in the back, just to give her your name and number, we'll have the planning department follow up with you on that question. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 10 is Wood Cliff well abandonment. Mr. West, good evening again.
Good evening.
Yeah, I don't know how lengthy of a discussion we have to have.
We've talked about it several times.
Certainly, you have a core part of us. Version is essentially, we have been given the official approval to abandon the Wood Cliff well site. As you know, that has been taken offline for quite some time due to the elevated arsenic levels, and we were required by DEQ as part of our former wastewater treatment plant monitoring to keep that online as a sampling site. Recent legislation has changed the levels of, for groundwater sampling, and therefore we're able to reduce the number of monitoring sites. This seemed like an ideal one due to the ongoing maintenance costs associated with the building. We do have electric, we do have a generator on site, just the housing structure in itself. We ended up putting a new roof on it a couple years ago. I certainly believe that it's a benefit to the system to take this offline. But I do want to preface this with the approval was simply for the two wells to be abandoned, which is the first step to get this, the wells off of DEQ's radar. There still will be ongoing, for sake of our argument, we'll say demolition within the internal aspect of the building as far as getting rid of all the pipe and structures, but this is just the first step. And Brown Well Drilling was solicited for a quotation on this. They're the ones who actually installed the system. They do all our well maintenance, and historically they have been competitive as from a price standpoint, and I'm very comfortable with them doing this work.
So they, did they come out and they actually seal it?
Yes, they're actually going to pull everything out and then they'll grout it, and then there's concrete pedestals actually inside the structure, and ironically, DEQ said those pedestals actually have to be removed. I think it's an issue with you're severing the tie so you can never install it without pulling another permit. So that's included in this price. So there's some actual concrete hauling off-site and disposal fees included in that.
Any questions?
We have a question on the calculation of the depreciation value. Is that done by our staff?
Yes. When the asset first came out of the system, it's given a value and a depreciation schedule, and that's the depreciation amount left in the useful life of the asset there.
And there's one wellhouse with two wells?
That's correct. There's two separate pumps and wells in there.
So they're actually abandoning two?
Yes, that is actually for the, for two services, so, and two pedestals and the removal of everything off-site.
How quickly can they get the work done?
Pending the approval, they're anticipating tentatively within three to four weeks. Because they're going to have to pull the permits through DEQ on behalf of Heartland Township.
That was my next question.
So what happens to the building? It goes back to the association?
Yes, the actual Wood Cliff agreement states what happens to the building. We're going to look into it in a little bit more detail, probably go for legal review as well, just to see if there's a cost associated with that or if it's more of a handoff. That's something we have to do a little bit more investigative work. We really didn't anticipate to have this approval in the method that they sent it. We were anticipating an actual form letter, and it was simply emails. And so we copied them and they said, no, you're good to go. Go ahead and take it offline. So I thought this would be a much longer process for the approval, which it has. It actually had to go through the groundwater division, and then it also had to go through the water division as well, so that we needed two separate approvals, which is why this took a little bit longer than a standard well.
Weren't we already planning on doing this when we prepared our last fiscal budget?
Yes, this has kind of been in the works in anticipation of the new legislation that was passed. We knew the levels were going to change. We just didn't know to what degree they were going to change.
Is the fee from Brown Drilling within what was already allocated in our budget?
I believe so. I believe it's right on, right on par with what we were originally projecting. There were, like I say, the additional fee for that concrete pedestal removals and then disposal of that, but that's somewhat minor in the grand scheme of the project.
Just to clarify, we did not budget for the Brown Drilling's expense per se. That's a budget amendment as part of this. This, yes, it's been in the plans. We did not budget for it this year, so a budget amendment is required.
I'll move to authorize supervisor and clerk to sign the contract with Brown Drilling for the abandonment of the Wood Cliff distribution wells in the amount of $13,964, and to approve budget amendments that will do, that will also include depreciation in the amount of
Motion by trustee Colani, second by trustee Petrucci. Any other discussion? Beating on halls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item, board reports. Second meeting in July starts with trustee Colani.
Just a reminder, this Sunday is the Heartland Next Door Teen Center golf outing. It's a nine-hole golf outing, $40 per person. We're looking for hole sponsors. We're looking for foursomes. So this is come out and support the teen center. This is a very important fundraiser. It's one of our biggest of the year, and we'd like to see a lot of folks show up and enjoy the day. I believe food is being provided, is that right?
Yes.
That's all I have. Oh, I have, you know, we were going to talk about the hero.
It's going to happen at our next meeting.
Okay.
That's fine. Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Trustee Germaine?
Nothing this evening.
Trustee Petrucci?
I passed out a draft teen center budget for your enjoyment, meeting enjoyment, so go ahead and take a look at it. It's not final, but it's pretty close to where we are right now, and looking forward to doing another year there.
Thank you. I have nothing this evening. Manager Wickman, your report?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Just a couple of quick notes about some handouts that were in front of you.
I'm sorry.
I'll defer my time to the gentleman from Heartland Estates.
I'd just like to remind voters that the primary election is two weeks from today on August 5th, and that all voters in Heartland Township vote at the Heartland Educational Support Center on M-59, which is the old high school. Polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and you can review the ballot online at our website, heartlandtp.com. And also along with that, remind everyone that the next board meeting due to that election will be on Wednesday, August 6th.
That's it. Thank you. Manager Wickman?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. We, of course, emailed you out the parks policy survey just as we're wrapping up these ordinances. Probably thought this was the simplest form to kind of deal with the meat on the bone of the issues that you would want to see addressed in our ordinance. There are, you have soup to nuts here on the different things that park ordinances can regulate and choose not to, and just by their inclusion, that's not necessarily our endorsement. We just offer that to you as a à la carte menu, if you will. If you could please give us your responses to that, then we could present a draft to you that, you know, starts off at least on a consensus of the board, hopefully. To that end, I've also handed out new this evening, and I will email out tomorrow a similar document related to pending sidewalk ordinance. There are a number of difficult policy questions there that communities inevitably wrestle with when looking at these, and your preliminary feedback would be coveted in that process, so please do get that back to us as well. Again, I will email that out, so we'll take your responses either way. Just a couple highlights from my operational reports. Again, the board retreat is confirmed for Wednesday, September 10th from noon to 6:00 PM at the EMS building in Howell by the airport. We'll get you more specific directions as the time gets closer. There's a very nice facility, we'll be up in the boardroom there with Dr. Bender. We have the Parks and Rec Master Plan, preliminary planning process is underway. I'm happy to report that it's, we've gotten a quick start to it. Our public works director, Bob West, and our planning director, Dave Campbell, are going to be instrumental in carrying that process through. Again, it's going to be, have a lot of similarities to the Roads Task Force. We will have a Parks Task Force. We will be looking for members of the community that want to serve on that task force. There'll be more to come on that as we get closer to the beginning of the school year, and we'll try to do some recruitment, and the board will point that task force at that time. Another highlight worth mentioning, the filled sidewalk. The board did authorize up to $40,000 worth of work on those filled sidewalks this year. Contractors are going to be submitting bids through the end of the month, and we'll be looking at those over by the second meeting in August to get that going before the construction season's up. I mentioned we got a couple ordinances that are making progress on, and that includes the water and sewer ordinance as well. And did also want to acknowledge that our zoning inspector, ordinance enforcement officer position is vacant. We have extended the deadline and are advertising a couple other areas to try to widen the pool. If anybody knows of retiree or somebody else that might fit that job description on a part-time basis, we'd be happy to talk to them.
I have a question for James regarding the rules survey.
Yes.
I understand it's just a consensus. I understand that. But what are you going to do with this, actually? What is this? What are you going to do with our results from the board?
So, so that the first draft of the ordinance that you see and give feedback on will reflect these policy directions that the board would like to see it go.
Well, part of the problem I'm having with this is that I think that in some parks, some of it can be allowed, in other parks it shouldn't be allowed. I have an issue, for example, I'll give you an example. Should amplified sound devices be allowed? My answer is yes. Why? Because people like to take radios into the park and sit and listen to the radio. Is that going to be part of the amplified devices that you can't use? So I think that there has to be a little bit more definition on some of these questions.
And if that's your feedback, let me know that, and I can, and we can take that conversation offline too. That's definitely the feedback that we're looking for. It's a bit oversimplified, for sure. I don't want to, I'm not going to...
Yeah, yeah. Can somebody sleep in a park?
Disagreed, yeah.
There's people who lay down on the benches on a hot day in the shade and close their eyes. Are you going to get a lot of the park? Yeah, there's just things like that that need to be more well-defined and, you know, that's where I'm going with it, so.
Any other questions? Our next elements to go into closed session to consider the six-month personal evaluation of township manager as requested.
I'll move to adjourn to closed session to discuss township manager's six-month performance review as requested.
Motion by Mr. Hopkins, clerk Hopkins, second by trustee Colani. I'm just going backwards. Any other discussion? If not, I have...
I wonder if we should delay until Lynn and Kathy can be present.
Whatever pleases the board. I would still be comfortable. I think their input is important.
Since it's a review, I think input should be...
Motion in a support. If there's no... You want to move to table? Want to move to table?
I'm just raising the point. We can talk tonight and talk another night too. It doesn't matter to me, but I personally would feel more comfortable if everyone was present.
You move to table?
I'll move to table to the next meeting.
I'll support that.
Got a motion to support the table. Halls in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
All right, James.
There's nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Motion by trustee Germaine, second by, I want to get you right here at the end. Trustee Hopkins. Clerk Hopkins. Halls in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. I still got it wrong.